Welcome back to the afternoon session of our August 4th public hearing. We are going to begin with item number four on our public hearing agenda, which is the first item after our lunch. And Caroline Kane Levy, the Deputy Director of Preservation, will read the item into the record and then we'll move to the presentation. Okay, Caroline.
Okay. Item number four is docket number twenty dash zero one four four one six forty-three Hudson Street. Historic District. It's a Greek Revival style house and store building built circa eighteen forty and altered between nineteen forty and nineteen eighty-five. And the action is to construct a barrier-free access ramp.
The applicant has joined the meeting. Let me share the screen now. Sorry, just one moment. Sorry, I'm having trouble with the screen share. The applicant, Jeanette, are you here? Sorry, just one moment. So I've just shared the screen with the applicant. If you could click on the screen to gain control. And if you can state your name for the record, you can be in the presentation. Oh, sorry. Running into technical difficulties. Believe the applicant is also calling in via phone and her phone is on mute. Is there a way that?
I think I can help with this. We need to. Can you tell me the last numbers of her phone?
It begins with six one two. She's listed as the first phone call-in attendee.
Okay, I just allowed her to talk. So she should be able to speak.
There you go.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Jeanette Klein from XWA Architecture, representing the owner of six forty-three Hudson Street. So as mentioned, the building was originally built in the Greek Revival style. But between nineteen forty and nineteen eighty-five, the cornice was removed. The lintels were shaved and the windows were replaced. The storefront was also replaced in nineteen fifty-nine and again in two thousand and five after its two thousand and three designation. It seems to just be scrolling, so just bear with me. Sorry about that.
If you use the. Yeah, if you use the arrow keys, you may be able to control it better than the mouse, than using the mouse.
Okay. Here you can see the location of the property within the historic district. Now the keyboard doesn't work, but I will continue with the mouse. Here you can see some of the storefront iterations over the years in the tax photo. And further here at the time of designation. And this is the most current design. And at this point, the building owner is looking to provide handicap access via barrier-free ramp. Here we're showing a few recent images of the building in context. Showing another handicap ramp at the corner of the block, which is grandfather's condition. And the existing building in context. And here is a rendering of the proposed ramp. You can see it's minimalist in design in an effort to minimally detract from the facade and have a minimal impact on the streetscape as a whole. And here's the proposal in elevation. And here in even more detail, specifying the use of cast-in-place concrete and a painted black railing. Here in plan, you can see the required ADA clearances that determine the design of the ramp and its interaction with the existing sidewalk cafe. In recent months, with the enormous impact COVID has had on New York City, we believe it has become even more important to minimize the loss of both interior and exterior seating and square footage when considering an appropriate ramp design. And the following sheets show the accessibility study that we prepared in order to determine the most appropriate design for our use. Here you can see two iterations of our accessibility study. An exterior perpendicular ramp at the top of the page is not possible as it obstructs the DOT required clear path, which must be half of the sidewalk. At the bottom of the page, you see it's also not possible due to the same DOT restrictions. At the top of the page here, you can see that an exterior parallel ramp would completely destroy the use of any outdoor seating at this location for the sidewalk cafe, and it impacts ten of the sidewalk cafe seats of the total of twelve. At the bottom of the page, you can see that sloping the sidewalk would require a tremendous amount of work at the sidewalk and it extends beyond the property line. You can see that an interior ramp would not be possible as it extends beyond the building or property here at the top. And at the bottom, you see that an interior ramp that would run straight into the space reduces the occupiable tenant space to two hundred and seventy square feet and would impact twelve of the current seating layout, which obviously, again, considering COVID is a whole different aspect. And then here at the top of the page, you can see that a lift, if installed, would block half of the storefronts and, in our opinion, detract from the facade and also impact six of the sidewalk cafe seats. And here at the bottom, an interior lift would reduce the occupiable tenant space to two hundred and fifty-three square feet and impact twelve seats. And finally, looking at the combination of interior and exterior ramps would reduce the occupiable tenant space to two hundred and seventy-seven square feet and would impact six of the interior seats and ten of the sidewalk cafe seats. So that's it for us.
Is that the conclusion of the presentation or are you scrolling?
Yeah, that's it, sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. So maybe if you can go back to the, to an elevation that shows the ramp, the proposed ramp. All right. So commissioners, this is a ramp on the front facade. The applicant just walked through different variations on providing access to show what they studied and ultimately concluded that the exterior ramp. Yeah, that slide might be good, actually, or this is perfect. Yeah, that the exterior ramp was the only technical, the only solution that was technically feasible and did not significantly impact the seating. So are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah. My understanding is there's some question as to whether the rails in the proposal, the applicant's proposal are absolutely necessary and required? Can they address that? Are they absolutely certain about that?
Yes.
Yes, so the railings are not required on a ramp of this height. But it was our opinion that it would, it would be kind of a safety issue because we are required to allow a four-inch barrier at the edge of the, of the ramp if we don't have a railing. So it would protrude four inches above the, the size of the ramp. And since you're, this is the only exit from the building, we felt it might be a safety hazard.
Okay, other questions? Okay, why don't we turn to public testimony and we can come back and get further questions after that. So any members of the public who are in the meeting and wish to testify, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance. Okay, Lisa?
Great, and if we could move to the testimony slide at the very end, I think that would be good. But with that said, nobody signed up to speak on this item and I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. We're good. Okay, Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Community Board two, which recommended denial of the application.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Holford Smith, please go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question, but if, if the railings are not required by code, are the handrail extensions, could the handle extensions be eliminated? I understand that the desire to put the railings so that it's, you know, it's not a tripping hazard, but you also have the sort of twelve-inch extension on the end of the ramp. And I wondered if the rails aren't required, is that required?
So it's our understanding of the code that if you do install the railing, it must comply with the ADA requirements, which would require that extension. The, the design of the extension is not particular to this example. We just felt that this was the least intrusive and the most minimal option. But we can review that with the, at the staff level if, if that would help.
Thank you. Senator Jefferson, followed by Commissioner Gustafson.
Just, just a circulation issue. If you go back to your drawing, your elevation. So you're saying that you, to go into the, to the store, the restaurant, you have to go up the ramp and then make a turn, correct? That's the way you enter the restaurant?
Yes, correct.
And, and just the thinking behind it, why, why not just have circulation in the building and just step up one step to the restaurant? Why? What was the thinking behind the, the, the bend? Is it because of tables? Is that the reason?
Is it because of what? I'm sorry?
The tables, the two tables that you have.
The tables, yes. So the idea is that we would minimally impact the sidewalk cafe and at the same time offer the ADA access to the building. And in the Department of Buildings, with regards to the one step, when you have a grandfather's condition of an existing one step, they permit it. But installing a single step is not permitted along the path of degress.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
It, it seems, this seems so straightforward. Can you tell me what the Community Board's problem was with the proposal?
They were concerned with the impact on the sidewalk. They felt that we could slope the sidewalks and have that work. They felt that the slope of the sidewalk could be steeper than what we showed on our drawings, which is not correct. And there was concern about the proximity to the tree pit and to the parking meter, which we've reviewed with DOT and is acceptable.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Commissioner Letty.
I don't know if this was addressed because I got up for a second. But was there any exploration of the thought of just lowering the step to grade? So you wouldn't need to do a ramp?
We would have, sorry.
No, and then people could just go in and you wouldn't lose any of your tables or?
Right, that would mean that we would have to lower the entire floor of the space, including the kitchen, including modification of the stair that goes directly to the cellar. It would just mean ripping out the entire interior and rebuilding, which I think at this point for the tenants, since this is coming from the owner, he's trying to minimally impact his tenants as well. So taking out the cafe that's currently there in order to modify the interior didn't get very far, to be honest.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, not seeing any other questions. I think we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Letty, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And I think for the purposes of the discussion, can we go back to the photo montage slide that shows the ramp? There, that's great. Okay, thank you. So I, I think the applicant did a really good job showing all of the different alternatives they explored. And it's clear that some wouldn't even technically meet code or physically work within the space. And then others have a significant impact on the interior use of the space. And so I do think that because it's only one step and really low, that in this case, a switchback could be appropriate. But I know there were a lot of questions about the railing and whether it would be preferable to have just a portion of the railing in front of the residential door removed or to have more of the railing removed and, and replaced with a four-inch curb or lip along the ramp. So I think we will flush that out in our discussion. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start the discussion on this one?
Well, I, I think it's appropriate. But I, I would, I would look at the railing again because, I mean, I, I think the scale of it is, works fine. I, I just think that it, it could be simplified a little bit more. It makes for a more handsome composition. But I think it's a technical problem that she's looking for, she's trying to solve. So I think it's fine. I would just wanted to see it a little bit more refined.
Well, the railing is pretty simple. So are you thinking about removing a portion of it?
Removing a portion, for example.
Okay, at the, maybe at the door. Okay, great. All right, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I, I can approve as is, but I would want the applicant to look, take another serious look at the, not the design of the railing, but whether the railing is really needed there. There must be, that we've seen other situations where we've had the same amount of step height coming out of a building, a commercial building and, and no rail and done it in a safe manner. So I'm not sure I understand why their safety issue is, is, is here and not in those cases. So I do want them, you know, take a hard look at that before they, but then maybe staff can work with them on that.
Okay, I mean, I think that they, they could do it if they did a four-inch curb instead of the railing. But they were afraid that the four-inch curb would be a trip hazard.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying is that I, you know, I, I, we've seen these things before without the railings. So I'm not sure why that's, this is a trip hazard and those aren't.
Yeah, I think it was a, just a decision that was made. So I think the question for you is, you know, would you prefer, even though this railing is very transparent, would you prefer no railing or?
Well, I would, I would, I would prefer no railing, but, but you know, it's posed in a difficult way. You know, I mean, if you're telling me that if I say no railing, then we're going to have people, you know, falling on their faces every five minutes. I certainly don't want that happening.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think it's appropriate as.
Switched my direction by accident. Okay. Commissioner and Holford Smith.
I think it's appropriate as is. I think I understand why it would be a tripping hazard. So I'm okay with it as, as designed.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
I, I think that, you know, it's, it's a general appropriate. I do feel that if there, if it's possible to come up with another solution that involves less railing or no railing, if that is safe, I, I think that'd be a good idea. At one end, I know they have a sign board, I think, which obviously could, you know, assist. But I don't, I'm not sure how that would work. I mean, what would be, what would be possible? But I guess I'd like them to at least explore that further and see if there's some possibility of coming up with something. But I certainly can approve some handicap or access for people with disabilities at this location, so.
Goldblum? Commissioner Goldblum? We might have lost him, so let's move to Commissioner Devonshire.
Thanks, Sarah. I, I am inclined to approve it as presented. I would hate to be the blind guy who's walking down the street and hitting that curb without a railing. My attorney, my attorney would enjoy it, but I think it creates hazard that's unnecessary, so I can approve it as is.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
I agree. I, I think the, having been a victim of one of these steps falling off in a park, I can appreciate the need for the railing. And, and in my instance, even with the railing, I tripped.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I'm in agreement and want to thank the applicant for saving us a whole return trip to the commission by giving us all the options, first off, rather than having us to ask her to show us why, why none of them make sense. So I think all of this is somewhat unfortunate, but not terribly so in this case. And it's fine as is, and I, I think it would be a tripping hazard, absolutely, without the rail.
Commissioner Letty?
Yeah, I agree. I, I appreciate the liability concerns that the applicant was speaking to and think, and think it's actually very appropriate. It's very simple.
Okay, great, and, and I, I agree. I think that the railing, because it is so open, is really transparent and doesn't detract from the streetscape or the building. So I think we actually have enough to approve it as is. We can certainly ask them to continue to explore the railing or, you know, a portion of the railing with the staff. But I think today we can make a motion to approve it as is. And Commissioner, let me find one who's totally fine with it as is. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you read the motion?
In the matter of LPC two zero zero one four four one six forty-three Hudson Street, Gansburg Market Historic District, a Greek Revival-style rowhouse and store built in circa nineteen forty and altered between nineteen forty and nineteen eighty-five, the application is to construct a barrier-free access ramp. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Gansburg Market Historic District. And I recommend approval, finding that the proposed ramp will provide barrier-free access at both entrances without eliminating any significant architectural features and that the low height and simple design of the ramp and landing will not overwhelm the facade. That the concrete ramp and landing and metal railing materials will be in keeping with the other ramps found within the historic district and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
All, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letty?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Hey, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item. And I just lost a tree right outside of my window. So please excuse the fact that I just got distracted. Just came crashing down. Oh my gosh. It's incredibly windy out there.
Yeah. My internet is very unstable, but I'm going to go ahead and move. The next item is item number five, docket number twenty dash one 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 seven zero fifty-six Northmore Street in the Tribeca West Historic District, Borough of Manhattan, Block one eighty-seven, Lot twenty-one. Application for a certificate of appropriateness. An early twentieth century commercial-style garage building designed by Remwick, Aspinall and Tucker, built in nineteen fourteen and altered by Remwick, Aspinall and Tucker in nineteen sixteen with two additional stories. The application is to construct a rooftop addition, modify entrance and fill and install a marquee.
The applicant has joined and we're just connecting the presentation. So just one moment.
I, I, can you all hear me now? It's Cass Tackleberg Higgins Quasparth?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, terrific, great. Let me advance. Okay. I think that's on your end, Caroline.
All right, I'm just pulling the presentation back up now, just a moment.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So I'll do it.
Sorry.
A brief introduction, soft shoe while that's coming up. As I said, Cass Tackleberg Higgins Quasparth and Partners. And I'm joined with, with the Iran Chen of ODA Architects. I'll be doing the initial part of the presentation and then Iran will take you through the design presentation. As Caroline mentioned, the project site is fifty-six Northmore, located in the Tribeca West Historic District. And the project we're going to present is the adaptive reuse of this nineteen teens garage building for new commercial use. Our client is Metro Loft. We've had the good fortune of working with them for fifteen, twenty years on a number of rehabs in Lower Manhattan, including the National City Bank Farmers Trust Building and Twenty Exchange Place. Restoration of that building and conversion to residential use. And also more recently, four forty-three Greenwich Street, which was recently completed, a warehouse, beautiful warehouse building converted to residential use with a complete exterior restoration. So I think we are ready to go.
Yeah, Kaz, if you click on the screen, you should be able to control it. And you might need to use the scroll arrows or use your mouse or click on the screen to advance rather than keyboard.
Did you, did you want me to let Iran Chen in?
Yes, please.
Okay.
For some reason, it's not advancing for me. I'm clicking on the screen.
Maybe, yeah, maybe try scrolling with your mouse. Will that advance it for you?
Haven't had this problem before.
I can also advance if you'd like me to.
Perhaps that may be better. Yeah, it's for some reason, it's not working for me. So let's go to the next slide, actually, slide two. Terrific. Thank you. Terrific. Thank you. Great. Thanks, Elizabeth. So as Caroline mentioned, the building is a five-story garage building. It was built in two phases. The lower three floors were completed in 1914. And then the upper two floors were completed two years later in 1916. It's got 100 feet of frontage, as you can see in the site plan, 100 feet of frontage on the south side of Northmore. And it's quite deep, filling up about 90 feet in depth on this, on this lot. It's a bit of an outlier as a building type and age. The designation report obviously speaks to the, you know, commercial development of the district, focusing really on the, the market uses in the district and the development of store and loft buildings and warehouse buildings between about 1860 and 1910, all largely tied to the food industry. This is a, obviously a vehicular garage completed in 1916. So it's a little bit unusual for, for the district. And the scope of work involves across this facade, repair and restoration on the upper floors, removing these window grills that have been in place for decades, window replacement, removing the roll-down gates at the center of the elevation, installing new infill and a canopy at just those four central bays, and then constructing a rooftop addition, which will not be visible in this view or any of the views directly across the street from the building. Next slide. Looking at some of the historic images, the photo on the left is actually a photo of the neighboring store and loft building at 64 Northmore, built in about 1890. The three-story phase of our building, 56 Northmore, is seen on the left margin of that photo prior to its enlargement. And the image on the right is from the Suites catalog. It was an advertisement for the peel doors, which were used for these very large-scale openings, both on the, on the exterior of the building at the ground floor, but also the interiors as each floor obviously had access to the elevator. What's been interesting to us is we've been looking at the documentation, the history of the building as this sort of notion of this sort of dynamic interior space and the sense of movement that came with this, with this elevator and the different platforms, as well this idea of this sort of central void that was visible even from, from the outside at the center portion of the, of the facade. Next slide. Looking at the 1940s photos, the tax photos, now these are illustrating the building in its current height, the five stories. So you can even see on the upper portion of the photo on the left, a slight different tone in the brick, so showing the upper two floors added later. The deeply recessed windows and that whole facade articulation has been lost with the addition of the window grills. Also point out on the photo on the right, this large void, this big opening with this segmental arch. This is the entry into the ground floor space. This has been, that, that arch has been obscured for many years with the roll-down gate that's, that's in place. Also just point out that the building to the, to the west, to the right in that photograph, that five-story building from the 1890s, just given the scale, 56 Northmore, it's, it's nearly two stories taller, but also a five-story building. So it just gives you a sense of the large footprint, but also the large scale of the building and its floor heights. Next slide. Some more recent photos on the left, the 1980s tax photo and the photo from the Lamarr's collection during the time of designation. The building really has not changed very much since the 1980s. And as I mentioned, roll-down gates at the ground floor and these window guards on the, on the upper floor windows and ground floor windows really sort of masking the reading of the building. Next slide. A current photo, as I mentioned, building looks fairly similar to, to, to its appearance in the 1980s. A few things just to point out. The window guards and grills are still in place, the addition of the roll-down gates at the center. And the way the building operates, these two bays with the roll-down gates are for vehicular entry to the ground floor. And then the two central bays are accessed directly into the elevator. And you can see, or the elevators, you can see the, the doors that open top and bottom, protecting from the top of those two central openings. Next slide. Some details of the ground floor, again, the roll-down gates. These are the, showing the elevator doors in the open and closed position. And as I mentioned, the, the segmental arched opening to the ground floor is obscured by the roll-down gates. Obviously, all of that will be removed along with, along with the window grills. Next slide, please. Looking at the, some of the details on the upper floors. There's decorative brick detailing. The building has been repointed over, over the years with a fairly heavy hand. We, we intend to, to address that, cut out the non-matching mortar and, and repoint. The photo on the lower right gives you a sense of the brick and the original mortar. Obviously, the conduit and the signage will all be removed. Next slide. The windows, historically, the building was built with wood windows. These windows have not been maintained at all. They have the, the grills on the outside unclear when they were painted last and the interiors are severely checked. And the, the program involves replacing these windows and we're working with the staff on a window replacement program. Next slide. The rear of the building was also fenestrated. The photo on the left is looking from the parapet directly down across the rear elevation. All the window openings have been blocked in with concrete block. And you can see that in the photo in the middle. This is from the second floor, looking at the back. You can see the block. All of that will be removed and new multi-light windows will be installed across the rear elevation. As well at the bottom of the elevation, there's a slight, a small extension off the back of the building that historically had a sloped skylight. You can see that in the far right photo. That skylight's been covered over. We're going to reopen that skylight to bring more daylight and transparency into, into the interior. Next slide. Turning to the, sort of the buildings of the block scale and the context, looking at the north and south elevations of the building. So across the bottom is the north elevation of Northmore Street, directly across the street, which you can see for maybe three quarters of the block is a fairly consistent building height and, and architectural expression. These, all these buildings were built within about 10 years of one another. All this sort of store and loft and warehouse buildings. And then from the earlier phase of developments or rowhouse scale on the far left of that, you can see as well across the roof scape, tall bulkheads at the far left. There's a two-story commission-approved addition above 387 Greenwich, was this sort of L-shaped building with a exposure on Northmore and Greenwich Street. The south side of the block where 56 Northmore is located, which you can see on the top, there's a lot more variety across that block front. There are two buildings from about 1890, 119 Hudson at the corner, and then 64 Northmore, which I mentioned earlier, 56 Northmore from 1916. And then on the far right of the south elevation is the Greenwich Hotel, which was constructed in 2008. So you've got a variety of scale, building type, architectural expression on the south side of the block, where there's a bit more uniformity on the north side of the block. Next slide, please. This is now a aerial perspective of the block again. So 56 Northmore is outlined in red. You can just get a sense of the scale of the building. As I mentioned, it's, it's 100 feet of frontage on the street and about 90 feet deep. Nearly all the buildings on the block have additions of varying scales and visibility. But we thought it was useful to sort of see this aerial view to see the, the roof scape of, of the buildings on the block. Next slide. We also thought it was worth just sort of acknowledging the perspective of LPC approvals over the last 20 years or so in the Tribeca districts, particularly Tribeca West Historic District. The commission has approved a, a number of large-scale, multi-story additions on these large warehouse and industrial buildings. The appropriateness is often grounded in, in the scale of these buildings. The buildings, these particularly the warehouse buildings, store and loft buildings in Tribeca are of a scale, as the commission has found, that they can withstand these large-scale designed additions. And while our proposal, as you'll see in Iran's presentation, is, is not nearly as visible, we think it's important to consider this perspective. I'll also just mention two, two more recent projects. Henry Smith Miller Stone Clouds Project on Leonard Street, which was also a two-story designed addition. And more recently, a three-story addition down on 50 Hudson Street. That was a, a three-story addition on a three-story building that was approved a few years ago. Next slide. And then just finally, sort of an aerial view, again, looking north from about, from our project site. Again, just highlighting the way the, these buildings have evolved over time. These are just a handful of projects that have all received a commission approval for one and two-story additions. 157 Hudson Street near the center of the photo with a two-story addition on a three-story building. 443 Greenwich Street, which I mentioned earlier, visible one-story addition with tall bulkheads. So there have been a number of commission approvals for visible occupiable space as well as bulkheads. And we think largely, in addition to the design elements that came with those projects, is, this is about the scale of these very large-scale properties and project, buildings within these Tribeca districts that, that allow for this kind of modification. So with that, I'll have Iran take you through the design presentation.
Thank you, Cass. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello, commissioners. Hello, Sarah and staff. Hope everybody's well. You know, for, as it relates to the auto-mobile industry, the American industry of the 1890s have changed cities, or our cities forever. As for 130 years, we've designed cities to accommodate cars. Car garages were definitely a, a new typology. Around the country, the car garages were structured mostly with a series of ramps. However, with the tight footprint of New York City, buildings have created kind of mega elevators, which were defined their characters on three principles. The first one is large elevator doors at the level of the street. The second one is quite often a vertical expression of this big shaft. As Cass says, sometimes you see that shaft from the street. And the third one is the sense that there's a typical kind of interruption to the otherwise orderly floors, if you will, a sense of being in between those floors as these big shafts are moving up and down the building. So I think it's fair to say that those types of buildings are dying breathe, or hopefully in our cities. And future cities will probably be designed more for pedestrian and less for cars. But we think this is a brilliant opportunity for us to design and celebrate the memory of this typology. In three basically principle, the ground floor infill, which I'll show you, the interior design and the architectural language that we've created for the addition. Next. I'll start with the addition. The first thing we've done is created the sweater or the envelope, if you will, based on the visibility on the different points of view around the site. The intention was to create a minimally visible addition based on these viewpoints. That study resulted, next. In an overlap of the two principles that I just described. The first one is a type of architecture that doesn't just rely on a floor, two floors. In that case, a floor and a half of addition, but rather a series of terrace platforms that creates a sense of movement and break the space from the inside into these clear story openings that defines this idea of the, sort of breaking the mold of the floors. The other thing is, as you see the trajectory of that addition from west to east, where the highest point of the bulkhead is the, on the east side at the back and the lowest is at the front of the building on the west side, kind of conforming with the setbacks based on the viewpoints. Next. If you look at a section to articulate what I just said, it's very important to us to create a very unique experience in the addition. You see on the typical floors, we've got about a 13-foot clear ceilings at the highest point and as low as nine-foot ceiling as the lower points, where that dynamic space allows for interesting lights to penetrate in. And those shelves that were created, some of them are outdoor spaces and some of them are just green roofs. At the floors below, you can start seeing the double height that is remaining from the existing shaft of the elevators, which we propose to leave open to accentuate that, the same architectural character. Next. Just a short comparison. On the left side, you see this section through the existing structure, through the shaft of the elevator facing the street. And you'll see that our proposal maintains the opening shaft at the ground floor to the cellar level. And you'll see that in more detail soon. And then maintaining the double height shaft on the last two existing floors. And above that, you'll see the one and a half story addition, if you will. Next. On the left is the existing roof plan, as Cass mentioned, gigantic roof, 100 by 90. The two egress stairs are what provided these kind of two bulkheads, brick bulkheads on the existing facade. We're going to remove the egress stair into a Caesar stair at the right side, right at the edge of the property. And then adjacent to it, the elevator shafts. There is two skylights in the middle of the roof. We wanted to maintain that sense. And we pushed them out to the first terrace, as you can see at the top of our drawing. Beyond that, there's small mechanical plate at the setback. And the setbacks conform with the zoning requirements. Next. As we go up the floor of the addition, you see on the left side, the seventh floor. And you see how only two elevators are going up to that level and only a single elevator continues up to the roof. The roof terrace is a mutual terrace for all the tenants of the buildings. Very important, especially in these days, to get an access to a roof. And we chose the last elevator on the southeast as the only one who comes up to minimize the size of the bulkhead. You see also how the, the stair is shrinking and the mechanical enclosure is placed behind the bulkhead. And this, the other one on the left side is an invisible, a mechanical bulkhead on the left. So I want to take you through the viewpoints. There's plenty, so I'll try to be brief. As you can see, starting from one to 10, starting from east to west, the views along Northmore from the east, including the view under the building, as you'll see, is really very, very small. And we concentrated a bunch of views at that open garden. It's a privately owned, public space at the corner of Greenwich and Northmore. It's also right outside of the district because this is where you'll see more of those visibilities. I, I want to point out that in our initial study, we've missed some of those points, especially eight, nine and 10. And we added them later and you'll see all of those as we present this today. So I'm starting from the east on Northmore, point number one. The illustration on the left is a picture of the mock-up. The one on the right would be the rendering of the addition. And the little diagram at the middle at the back will show you where there's slight visibility in color. So you'll see from that, because it's hard to see from the picture, there's a piece of the bulkhead that is visible from that point, far away from our building, actually above that corner red brick building. And yes, Cass, if you can point it out, that would help. So you'll see the, really this, the edge of that bulkhead, where our building is sort of mid-block. That's the only thing you'd see from that point. Next. I'm getting a little closer and you get to see a bigger portion of the facade of our building. Again, nothing of the addition is visible besides a snippet or a hairline of the rail at the front. The existing bulkhead railing is only two feet high, so we have to add the railing at the edge of the building for safety. However, you'll see that it's, it's really minimally visible. It's made of mesh and steel frame. View number three, we're right at the corner. And you can see on the left, the railing right at the edge of the building, the edge of it in orange. I should point out that in the mock-up, everything that is orange is railing and everything that is building mass is black, netting. So really here is just an overlay of a series of railings, as you can see in the illustration at the bottom. And in the real renderings, really hard to see any of it. It's all in the background of the adjacent building's bulkhead. Now I'm standing right under the building, looking up. On the left side, again, picture of the mock-up. And on the right side, you see, if you look closely, the top of the railing bar, which would be a steel bar and the infill of that steel mesh, quite minimal to, to, to the eye. That's the only thing you would see. Now we're continuing to move west, and I want to point out, looking at our block right now, from the building at the far left, you start recognizing a series of existing bulkheads and additions that were approved on that particular block. For example, the brick brown one where the cursory is on the left. Cass, I don't know if you can point that out.
Actually, Elizabeth who's controlling this, so.
Oh, Elizabeth, okay. Sorry, Elizabeth. You can see the two bulkheads, the stair bulkheads of our own building. And on the right side, you see a brick bulkhead on the adjacent building. And in between those two bulkheads, you see our addition. What we see is a small part of the edge of the addition of the first floor with the railing on top of it in orange, as you can see in the illustration on the right with the rendering. So it is minimally visible. You cannot see it from the front of the facade, but only from the side facades. And with the context of the adjacent bulkheads, it seems very much in context. Next. View number six, we're now getting to the corner of Greenwich and and Northmore, I'm sorry. And this is the border of the landmark district. And quite interestingly, the new hotel, Greenwich Hotel, has this kind of tilted glass portions. You can see on the right of the dark bulkhead, which is the edge of the building bulkhead, our building bulkhead, again, way behind and far from the facade of the building. And if you look closely on the mock-up images, there's some orange railing appeared right above the existing stair bulkhead, and another slight of red railing to see at the very front. So the following images, I'm sorry, before the following images. Now I'm continuing west on Northmore, very far from the building itself. And there's nothing really visible beyond the edge of the railing, as you can see from both images. So what we recognized is, while from the street, everything is super minimal, if you were to step into the privately owned park at the corner, this is potentially where you'll see the most of the addition. I want us to concentrate on the image on the left. You see that you cannot, you can barely see our building. It's actually only four or five windows left on the edge. But you do see far beyond the bulkhead of the building in dark gray and the railing at the top of the last floor right close to it. One more thing to point out, and I know it's small and hard to see, the way that the stair bulkhead, the west edge of our building constructed, it stops short, and then it comes down into the roof level. And so right on the right side of it, there's an infill of our addition, which we proposed to do in brick, to create a straight line with the existing stair bulkhead. And then the visibility is only of that, of the bulkhead beyond. Next. Well, we're just going farther away. I don't think there's anything beyond what I showed before. Actually, as you go farther, less of that bulkhead that you see and less of our building. One other things to point out, when we look at that image, we realize the building on the left, which is an existing building with a rooftop addition, it was approved by the district, you can clearly see that bulkhead right there in the addition from outside of our district, as well as on the right side of that, or on the left side of this, you see the bulkhead of the adjacent building. Meaning to say, this entire block has, outside of the district, visibilities of those additional bulkheads. And last is view number 10, where the trees are totally hiding our building. And far beyond, quite aligned with the sloped portion of Greenwich Hotel, you see in gray the top edge of that bulkhead. So the park is, before I just move on, this kind of privately owned park is where you'll have the most visibility of the addition. Three elements that I'm asking commissioners to consider. Number one, the typologies of these bulkheads that you see everywhere around the buildings. It's pretty consistent with that. Number two, the addition never seen from the front of the building, but always from the side facade through the building next door to us. And the bulkhead is really the one element that is visible. So the materials of the intervention in this entire building were consistent with existing material of the building, which is metal and glass. We wanted to limit the number of materials and to take an approach that everything that we're touching or adding beyond the existing would seem a bit more modern in language and clearly articulate as an addition. I want to start with the ground floor penetration by saying that we're not touching any of the masonry pieces. All of them stay intact. We're actually exposing the two arched openings that are currently blocked by the garage doors. However, we have a unique way of trying to articulate those openings to point out the memory of the elevators that were there. So let's concentrate on the ground force for a second. Oh, okay, before that, I'm sorry. Just to zoom in into this, and you see the existing brick, the color that we're choosing, which is a dark warm gray, we call Iron Mountain color. The railing, as you see on the right, the steel frame with the stainless steel mesh guardrail. And you'll see a lot of landscape because of, most of these tiered roofs are going to be green roofs. So the building was designed in a symmetrical fashion, as we can see, where the center or the heart of the building, right underneath the vertical shaft, is where the elevator's doors were. On the two sides, there are two openings into the ground floor where cars drive in, and they're all covered, the masonry covered by these garage doors. And then on two sides, there are existing windows, two pairs of existing windows, and at the edges, two pairs of egress doors. The egress doors will be replaced with glass and steel doors. Actually, it's going to remain an egress door on the left side and become a window on the right side. And then we're basically just removing the covers of the existing pair of two doors and replacing the windows to match the historical ones. And then the four main penetrations become the main entrance to the building on the right and left arched openings. The rhythm of the division is taking from the building, existing windows, just double the size and scale. And then the two middle openings, what we've chosen to do is express, or we express, the framework of the elevator's steel frame and then infill it with a pane of glass that is very minimal to attract people to look down and to see the shaft that we celebrate inside the building as a memory of the place of those elevators. In a way, these two openings are the main kind of non-traditional sort of addition to that facade as a statement of what used to be the elevator openings. Next. I'm not going to go in detail, but all of the openings are well recessed within the masonry to create shadow line and depth of that masonry. Most of them above two feet back from the facade. All were done with very thin frames of aluminum to match the profile of the existing. I can go back to this if there are any questions. Let's go on. These are interesting, just the elevator openings. And again, what you see is a thicker kind of steel frame that ends with an angle at the edge is basically a copy of the original articulation of those elevator doors, just with a clear glass pane. Go on. And let's talk about the marquee. The building historically did not have a marquee. However, we do propose to add one because of the adaptive reuse. We propose to make it smaller than the traditional buildings in the district where the marquee carries through the entire ground floor and to concentrate on the four entryway penetrations. There are other examples in the district of more modern marquees that were added to buildings. We choose to use a thin steel profile as a modern addition to match with the top and to illustrate that this is not part of the original design. And we use these letters to call the name of the building, which will be called the garage, in a fashion that is kind of similar and inspired by the Porsche logo, Porsche, the cars that were invented in 1930s, is sort of tapping the hat to the idea of the car industry at large. So the marquee would have four openings with glass that would match the rhythm of the four main entrance to the building, as you can see here, and will be supported by four cables. Next. And will be very gently and elegantly lit at night with indirect LED lighting in coves that would illustrate the four openings, would light up the garage signage, and four of those light fixtures at the piers would light up to create a bit more drama to the building as an office and commercial building in this district. Now I want to point out, just this view, the two glass openings towards the shaft, which will attract people to go closer and look down. Next. And I just want to explain it in plan first. You'll see right in the center, there is this kind of what we call the courtyard below. We're essentially keeping the existing shaft where the elevators were to become a double-height space, looking down into the basement. And next to it, the entry vestibule on the lobby that also looks down into it. This will become kind of almost a sculptural celebration, architectural celebration at the opening. This is a confusing drawing, but it's inside looking out through that double-height space. I think the image at the next one will be better. Okay, so that's an illustration, a rendering. Now I'm standing at the cellar level, looking straight up towards the lobby at the ground floor entrance. And on my left, I see the glass opening where the elevator door used to be. You see that we're using cables and rails to kind of create a borderline to this shaft or a memory of that kind of technical aspects of the elevators. And on the left side, the articulation on the brick wall symbolizing where the sheer wall used to be, again, all in an effort to celebrate the history used and create a moment of time. Here's a view from the street looking down. And you see that there's going to be an open view to the office space and then to the double-height space that I showed before. A word about the back facade. We're proposing to take the infills on the existing penetrations with the original windows and replace them with new windows to match the front with the same quality and finish and rhythm. Next. And I just want to finish with this illustration. I honestly feel that this assignment of ours to kind of celebrate the building that perhaps was not as celebrated right now as the garage, as a memory in 10, 15 years, where we're not going to have any more of those in the city, perhaps a reminder for our kids, the way we used to live with cars, and hopefully would change in the near future. Thank you. I know it was long.
Thank you, Aron, for the thorough presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Yeah, I can get questions.
Yeah, questions, raise your hand if you have any questions, and I'll recognize you in the order in which your hand is raised.
I can't find it.
Can't either.
I can't find it.
Find.
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, all right. If you, just for those of you who may have lost your, if you go to your screen, if you hover over the bottom, you can see the participants. You can pull that up and raise your hand. I'm going to start with Commissioner Devonshire, and then followed by Commissioner Bland and Commissioner Jefferson. We will get to you.
I'd like to know what could be done to reduce the size of the bulkhead.
I'll try to answer that. Thank you for the question. So we've tried to do everything that we could. This is an elevator with a machine room at the basement. The bulkhead would rise only 23 feet. It's the minimum that we can make that, technically, we can make any elevator go up above the roof. And other than that, there's nothing else we can do.
Okay, Commissioner Bland.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I'm wondering about the strategy.
Whoops, sorry.
Okay, wondering about the strategy that you used for the two stories on the, new stories on the roof. You have multiple setbacks rather than, say, one or two. And I'm just wondering, I mean, you've spent a lot of time thinking about this, but doesn't that maybe bring more attention to and accentuate the idea of multiple stories on the roof rather than only two?
Well, I think architecturally, it creates a sense of scale that to me seems actually appropriate to this building. And I think that the dynamic sort of character of these platform, in a way, and I know that that's not maybe the first thing that people would think, but in a way, does express sort of the idea of movement within the building. And it allows us, I think, to create a very dynamic space inside as well. So we're basically hitting many points together that I think are valuable. If we were to do only two steps, which obviously we could, that's more a traditional way of doing it.
Right.
We couldn't have, I think, that quality of spaces inside. It would be less of roof gardens or terraces, which I see. We're not showing it, but a lot of landscape on those as well. And each one of those floors would be of a large scale.
Okay, as a designer myself, I might have answered my own question exactly as you have, but I wanted to hear it from you. So thank you.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I have a follow-up question to the one regarding the elevator bulkhead. I wondered if stopping the regular elevators at the floor below the terrace is possible, and then using more like a Lula or a limited-use lift just to get to the roof would be possible. That might not require the overhead that a real elevator would require. And if you looked at that, or if you could look at that.
Well, the one-story lift, as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, is illegal to use for passengers. Definitely not in that scale. And we could stop the elevator below and have no access to the roof whatsoever. I think we have to weigh the importance of that bulkhead. I think we have to weigh the importance of that bulkhead visibility with the importance of bringing people out to get fresh air and to be on, to use the roofs, especially in the context of COVID and our life today. I am a huge advocate to not have a single roof that is not being used. And I understand that we could avoid that bulkhead by not going up there. I think that it's something that we might regret over the years.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, did you have a question?
Yes. When I look at the proportion of the addition, it seems to be almost half of the existing building. It's 55 feet you're adding on top of this building. And it's a lot. I mean, the proportion of the building totally changes. But the question I have is why, why not? Just, so A, it's too high and B, if you could reduce it in size, the proportions would work better. It just seems such a large addition, no?
Well, I think we need to look at this in 3D and not just in a facade. It's not 50 feet, it's 50 feet if you include the bulkhead, I agree, but it's really 30 feet in two floors. I've done through the years rooftop additions to much smaller buildings, which had, let's say, 25 foot and there were a floor and a half invisible additions. And this is a 100-foot wide building with 90-foot roof. So while we're going high, we're also going back pretty deeply because we have that depth. Usually traditionally, our buildings would not be as deep because of setbacks. Here, you can see that the second floor beyond the setback on the, from the front required by zoning, we have additional setbacks going back to a point where it's really far at the back. So I think that while, when you look at it in facade, it seems like a big addition. I think overall for that massive building, for 100 feet front, 90 feet, I think proportionally, it actually works quite nicely.
If I could also just step in, this is Cass Acklebergen. Elizabeth, perhaps you could go to slide 13. I think, you know, one of the things that is particular about this historic district is about the underlying scale of the historic buildings. And I think as the district has evolved from its designation in the early 1990s through, you know, a variety of commission approvals, I think that notion of scale, and I think Commissioner Jefferson, your comment about the scale, particularly in elevation, seems quite large relative to underlying building. I think the visibility of the addition though is so modest. What you're seeing really is the elevator bulkhead. As Aaron showed, you know, with those visibility studies, you're really just seeing sort of the upper portion of the addition from over the side elevation from that plaza. There have been other approvals in the district. And I just wanted to just sort of talk a bit about this photo on the right, which is a complex of buildings directly to the north of our project site that spanned from Northmore up to Beach Street on Greenwich Street. This is, you know, on the historic building is a small five-story building with a three-story addition plus mechanicals above. And I think, you know, as compared to this, this kind of expression and visibility, the scale of what we're proposing is considerably smaller. So I think, again, just sort of the point that I made before about the very sort of large-scale, sort of broad-shouldered nature of these industrial buildings in the district, they have been sort of, it has been found by the commission in the past that whether it's a three-story addition on a three-story building or three stories on five, that these buildings can accommodate this kind of modification. So I just wanted to sort of reiterate, reiterate that point.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm raising my hand electronically, I believe.
All right, I don't see it, but please go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have two presences because one of them keeps on bombing out. I apologize.
Okay, so one isn't under the, in my list because of the name change.
I have a, I have a divided mind, what can I say? But I wanted to ask a couple of things. First of all, is there any visibility from the south?
No.
No. Great. Is there a reason for the floor-to-floor heights being five, you know, several feet taller than the existing floor-to-floor heights, which clearly does impact the visibility of your bulkhead?
Well, in fact, the 13-foot floor-to-floor that we're getting, it's actually 12 foot six to the beams, is an average height of the existing building floor-to-floor heights. The building has diverse floors. The, some of them are much higher than 16, some of them are, or 16, some of them are 10 and nine and 15. So we thought 13 is a good number that belongs to that building. It also, with the reality of mechanical system and stuff for an office building, seems reasonable for a Class A office. So I think we really tried to, one, not to be greedy with height, but at the same time, create a product that is of a value over time and sustainable. I want to say one more thing, maybe unrelated or related, that, you know, we work with many clients along the history and this particular client is unique in the sense that they are dedicated to create the best products without non-compromise, which allowed us to get to such great detail with everything we do. So we've measured all of these points with them, including the number of elevators that go to the roof, the ceiling heights, et cetera. And I think we came to a point that would create a great value. Yeah, it is reasonable.
Okay then, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any other questions. I think we'll move to public testimony. We can come back and ask more questions after we hear testimony, but we'll move to that now. And anyone who is in the meeting who would like to testify on the item should raise their hand so we can identify them. And we will start with people who signed up in advance and then get to anyone else who wishes to speak. So I'll turn it over to Lisa Krasavich now.
Okay, first, we're going to bring in Jason Friedman, who has his hand raised. And Jason, I just brought you in as a panelist. And all you need to do is unmute yourself and turn in your camera if you like, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, Jason Friedman from Community Board One. We sent a letter to you guys and I know everybody received it and thank you. So I'm not going to read that into testimony. It's a little long and I'm going to keep it short. I just feel like what the letter said was, we just felt as a community at the time of the presentation, that the building did seem unreasonably a large amount of bulk to put on that type of building, kind of really not even like the case studies that were shown in showing the Ice House and showing some larger buildings, like the Fisher Mills Building, which spans, you know, that whole block. So we thought the bulk was generally too much, but because of the nature of the way it was presented and some missing slides, we voted to approve it. And I guess we all just kind of still remain a little disappointed about the missing information, which I saw was mostly presented at this public hearing. I think there's a little bit more visibility to be had from the north on Hudson Street of the building. But otherwise, you know, we gave some testimony in writing and just speaking on behalf of Community Board One. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we didn't have anybody else sign up to speak and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, and Rich, did we see, receive any other written testimony?
No additional testimony other than the Committee of Run Resolution.
Okay.
Sarah, if I could just address that one comment, if I might, just in terms of this notion of missing information. As Aaron mentioned during the presentation, initially when we presented this project to the community board, there were a few views that were not represented. This was an oversight and we corrected that as soon as my office was able actually to get to the site and take additional photographs. We communicated that directly to the community board right after their committee meeting last month. They had all of that additional information prior to their full board meeting last week. We, of course, obviously provided that information as well to Landmark staff. And so we have made an effort all through this process to be as transparent and open in our communication from the time that we realized that there had been missed views. So we just want to make sure that the commission understands that. And that's why we have as many views represented in this presentation as we do, just to make sure that there is, you know, full disclosure for everybody to evaluate.
Okay, thank you. All right, any commissioners, any final questions? All right, not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to move toward closing the hearing. So commissioners, I'm unmuting you or asking to unmute in some cases. Please state your screen and, thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Right, and Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, let's call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll start our discussion. And there, you know, sort of really are two zones that we're looking at. One is the ground floor of the front of the building, which includes the marquee, multi-light infill within restored openings at the entrances and single light glass infill within loading bays. And then at the top, we're looking at the rooftop addition, bulkheads and railings. And as the applicant pointed out, the commission does have a long history of approving additions in this district. You know, I think partly it's the nature of the typology that is loft and commercial buildings are adapted for residential use. And, you know, and this is not the case here, but in many cases, the light narrow requirements require removals at the court, creating a courtyard or at the rear. And the commission has then approved putting the bulk on top, replacing some of that bulk and putting it on top. And as Cass said, I think has found that in many cases, the buildings are strong enough and robust enough. And I think in some way, these visible additions now are kind of part of the history of that story. Similarly, bulkheads are typical rooftop accretions and often they're found even at the front of buildings and we've approved extending them. So the question today is really about the, you know, the addition, the size of the addition, as it always is, the size of the addition relative to the building and then the visibility. And as some people have already questioned and commented on the general massing of it and to the pieces are visible, how they relate to the historic building. So as we move around to have our discussion, I'd ask commissioners to sort of remember to talk about both the ground floor and the base as well as the top. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to lead this discussion?
Okay, thanks. Well, it's an interesting application. I don't think there's any, I don't think I have any comments particularly or concerns about the work done on the existing building. It's great that he's exposing the arches. The big move of the solid glass for the garage doors is a little bit unusual, but I think it's fine. I did have a concern about the marquee, not the design of it itself, but I think that the signage is just much too big for this district. It's a very commercial scale of text and I just didn't think it was appropriate in its size. But otherwise, I didn't have any concerns, the windows look fine. In terms of the rooftop addition, I originally felt, as Fred and Evrata did, that the design was incredibly busy and tortured and that it looked a lot bigger than it needs to. But we do have a history of approving non-visible or minimally visible rooftop additions that look a whole lot more weird and bizarre than this. I'm thinking of, I forget the guy's name, there was one that was also downtown that was kind of like a zigzag bird dropping over, dropping its nose over the edge of the building. And there were some very interesting ones that were, there's the one in Soho with the kind of the zigzag roof by, I forget who it was, a New York firm, very interesting. What?
Yeah, the one on Mercer Street.
Yeah, so I think that, I think that there are, there is a precedent for not necessarily looking at the design of the rooftop addition, if it can prove that it is minimally visible. I do think that this can become more minimally visible, however. I think that the first and easiest thing to do would be to lower the floor-to-floor heights. The top floor, the top floor, the 16-foot inch floor is mostly 10 foot five on the interior. If you look at the section, you'll notice that the majority of the floor is low and that the only reason that it pops up, that extra few feet, is to create the clearest story at the back of the space. Yet it is that stepping up that forces the elevator up another three feet or whatever that dimension is. And I think that if you look at that from, from the point of view of both floors, and yes, it would impact on the clearest story design a little bit or a lot, but it would definitely reduce the visibility of the bulkhead. One way to have demonstrated appropriateness that was not taken here would have been to show the design as montaged onto the streetscape in elevation. It would have helped me to judge whether what appears to be a very bulky hall disproportionate addition was in fact appropriate relative to its neighbors. So even though there were three-dimensional views, I think that a kind of streetscape view would have been useful. But I definitely think that reducing the floor-to-floor height will minimize the visibility of the bulkhead. I also would suggest that the railing at the existing parapet be set back by at least three feet so that its visibility too can be reduced.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Devonshire.
I agree 100% with what Commissioner Goldblum said. The way to reduce the bulkhead is to reduce the floor-to-floor height on each of those floors. They're 13 feet, 14 feet. I'm sitting in a room right now that's nine foot six and it's luxurious. So four-to-four height gets reduced, everything else gets reduced too. I'm fine with everything that's going on on the ground floor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I agree. I think the, you know, what Commissioner Devonshire said is correct. I think that to the degree to minimize the bulkhead, I'm working with staff to see how it can be done.
Commissioner Bland.
The ground floor is exemplary. I think it's fantastic, as a matter of fact, great. The rooftop addition, although almost meeting my standards for, hey, it's okay to see stuff on the roof, it's a little past my, even my criteria. So I think it's been suggested by at least two other commissioners so far that it be reduced by simply lowering the floor-to-floor height and that seems reasonable. I did ask the question about the design and whether that did or did not attract your eye and think of it almost bigger. I like the answer. I think it would, it would be not as interesting and not as appropriate to just have straight two glass floors set back like that. So I encourage the architect to continue, even with lower floor-to-floor heights, an interesting top of the building that continues to use the idea of clear stories if possible. Otherwise, it's a very interesting scheme and much of what you see, not all of it, but much of what you see, you see kind of in the context of other rooftop additions and in front of higher buildings.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Overall, I think this is a really wonderfully designed project, really carefully thought out. I think so many aspects of it are very thoughtful and understated. I love, as Fred said, I love the way it works at the bottom. I think the use of glass and the use of glass, not only at the base, but the windows throughout the building, kind of breathe a new life into this building and take it to another level. And I would say the same of the design of And I would say the same of the design of the rooftop. I think it's a wonderful addition, I love the way it steps back, I like the, the fact that it's tiered. It's very interesting, it is much more interesting than many designs that we have seen. And it sits very nicely within the top of the building. That said, I happen to concur with my fellow commissioners. You know, the bulkhead can absolutely be brought down and we could lose a few feet on the floors to help do that. And such a creative firm and such a wonderful design, I have no doubt that the architects will be able to come up with a way to bring the bulkhead down.
Thank you, and Commissioner Jefferson.
I think the urban level, pedestrian level is very handsome and exciting. I think it would be a wonderful asset to walk down that street and look down and see that wonderful space. I think it's beautiful. I think the roof, the rooftop addition, if it's lowered would appear more to me. And also if the, if some of those views from that private park could be so you don't see it from the private park. I think though that some of the linear elements, just design could be a little bit more refined for my taste. But the, the, the linear elements are so random that the setbacks, the edge of the setbacks, that I would like to see that a little bit more refined. But on the whole, I think if it's reduced, it would be appropriate for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gustafson.
Three things, first, I want to make sure I divorce myself from whatever building that Commissioner Goldblum was talking about with a zigzag bird hanging over the edge of the roof. Here, I had nothing to do with that. Two is, I agree with, with Commissioner Devonshire and Goldblum about the height and potential modifications to reduce visibility. Three, though, I would, I would, I do want to comment on the facade and the base. They did a terrific job with them and I'm typically, I'm very protective of these garage buildings throughout the city. And here, they not only choose to preserve the building, but they also actually do effectively preserve the sort of visual reference points that bring you back to its historical use, so I'm, I'm pretty happy about that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, it seems to me that this is not exactly a rooftop addition, or I really wonder where a rooftop addition might have ended, like if it was slightly visible, if it was five stories on top of this building, would that be okay, would that be a rooftop addition? I, I'm not sure, so it's a little, that, that's confusing to me, it's, it's good looking and in, in terms of its, its own elevation, it does a good job of kind of confusing whether it's two or three stories of addition. But I, I tend, so I would think that they should remove one level rather than removing or lowering the ceiling height, because I'm a big proponent of more ceiling height. So I guess I'm saying, I approve this, but I don't, I don't consider it sort of a rooftop addition and they, they might well have reduced it by one level, especially because their footprint is so generous.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith.
I'll start at the ground floor, which I think is really well designed. And I think that the use of the single pane of glass to mark the two elevator openings is really a great idea and will really enlighten the street, so I think, I think that works very well. As well as all the, the windows and the, the other work that's being done on the facade. In terms of the rooftop addition, I don't have, I think it's mostly appropriate except for the bulkhead, which is why I asked the question about trying to use a lift. Which I think they should still try to investigate, I believe that's what was done at the Children's Museum, which allowed them to reduce the elevator bulkhead on that roof. So there may be a way to do that. I think that if that's not possible, then lowering the floors, the two rooftop addition floors could help bring the whole thing down and be less visible.
Okay, great, and I think Commissioner Chapin, I think.
Yes, I, as other commissioners, think that the ground level is very well done. I personally, I'm happy with, I think the marquee is fine. And I'm pleased with using the glass and the cables to memorialize the original elevators. I think that's very, you know, a really nice element. As to the rooftop addition and the bulkhead, nothing but the bulkhead is really visible and I don't have a problem with the the height of the addition itself, especially since it's set back twenty feet. I was hoping actually they wouldn't have to reduce the floor height, because I think that's, you know, it's kind of not, I, I like the way it's actually the multi-level design, I think is, is very interesting, though it might from elevation look cause this impression of several floors or something, but it is actually really only two floors, I believe, though they're, they're high floors. So I can't, I think everyone's looking to see it, see the bulkhead reduced somewhat if that's, in, in some fashion. But I think in other regards that I can really approve this, I think I like the way even the way the addition is designed, I think is interesting and it's something that I can support. I think the issue of setting back the railing a little bit might be a good idea, because there's no particular reason that needs to be visible and I think that could be done as Commissioner Devonshire suggested.
Okay, all right, thank you, okay, so I think most commissioners have come to the conclusion that reducing the floor to floor heights would help sort of nestle the addition in more and help to reduce the visibility of that bulkhead. So I think while there were some other suggestions, we have enough to go ahead and make a motion with that as the condition of the approval. And I think also, you know, setting back the railing seems like a very simple thing to do, since it's only minimally visible. It wouldn't take much to, to explore that. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion to approve with the modification that the applicant work with staff to lower the floor to floor heights to reduce the visibility of the addition and the bulkhead?
Sure. Sure. Regarding fifty-six North Moore Street, the Tribeca West Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop addition, modify entrance infill and install a marquee. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the construction of the proposed rooftop addition will not eliminate or cause damage to any significant architectural features. That this historic district contains several examples of visible multi-story rooftop additions that vary in scale and that the proposed stepped two-story rooftop addition with additional bulkheads is consistent with the scale of these additions. And given its moderate visibility, will not overwhelm the building or the streetscape, that the bulk of the addition is only visible from oblique angles from the east and west and is typically seen in the context of other rooftop accretions, that only the guardrail is visible directly across the street over the primary facade. And the railing's design and materials, including light colored mesh and thin profiles, minimizes its presence in the roofscape and does not detract from the building. That the design of the addition featuring irregular setbacks to minimize its visibility and metal multi-light window assemblies, faces and bulkheads will harmonize with the industrial character of the garage building. That the rooftop bulkhead and mechanical equipment have been situated toward the back corners of the roof to minimize visibility when viewed from close proximity to the building. And their presence will be otherwise in keeping with the visible rooftop structures found throughout the district. That the long metal and glass marquee, while not typically found on garage buildings, is a feature found in this historic district. And will be installed over several large openings that are of a scale similar to that of historic loading bays. That the historic size and shape of the large, large arched entrance bays will be restored. And the proposed multi-light metal infill at these bays and single doors will harmonize with the multi-light windows throughout the facade. That the former elevator loading bays will feature a single light glass, single light glass windows helping to differentiate them from the larger bays, which historically serve a different purpose. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. However, I recommend that the applicant work with staff to minimize the visibility of the bulkhead. And that he set the railing over the existing parapet back sufficiently to reduce or eliminate its visibility.
Thank you, and Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that?
He's muted.
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
That's approved, please continue to work with the staff and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Move to the next item.
The next item is item number six, docket number twenty dash one oh five seven five, sixty West Seventy-Sixth Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, Borough of Manhattan, block eleven twenty-eight, lot sixty-one. Application for certificate of appropriateness. Renaissance Revival Style Flats Buildings designed by Henry Anderson and built in eighteen ninety-two to ninety-four. The application is to modify the entrance landing and areaway and install a ramp.
The applicants have joined the hearing. You may begin, you now have control of presentation, please state your name. So are you giving over the controls to Bill Sook? Yes. He now has control of the screen and you made again your introduction. Bill, go back one. Good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Mary Dirix and I'm the preservation consultant for this project. This project is a proposal for an entrance ramp with modifications to front pier, railing, step and curb. This is sixty West Seventy-Sixth, it's, this is a building from a few years ago, it has scaffolding on it now, next slide. Here's the building as it looks today, next slide. Here it is on Amsterdam and, or whatever, Columbus and Seventy-Sixth, next slide. This is the front, this is also taken a few years ago before the sidewalk bridge and the scaffolding. Next slide, oh, the Ailes Mirror, by the way, is eighteen ninety-two to ninety-four Renaissance Revival Style Flats Building designed by Henry Anderson. This is what it looked like in nineteen forty. We, you can barely see it, but the piers that are in question are the white things in front of the building, next. Next. The piers were there in the nineteen forties, but they're not original. These are photos taken over a period of years that show that it's had more than one color and research and surface. We this bottom, the left pier, which is the one that's being modified, has quite a big crack in it. And the bottom detail is very angular and looks even more recent than the nineteen forties, next slide. A probe was done, a hole was drilled with great difficulty through there, and then it turned out the top could be lifted off, next slide, Bill. So this is with the top off, it turns out that it's a hollow concrete box. Not original, but for some reason dating to before nineteen forty. Next slide, please, these are the details of the granite entrance step that will be sort changed, covered, and the curves, which are apparently concrete. Next slide, Bill. Bill Sook from Sook Design will present the proposal. Bill, are you muted? Bill? All right, I'm gonna start and Bill, if you would chime in when you can, or Bryce. This is the front of the building. And the next slide, who's ever doing that, this is the proposal, it's for a
Okay, I'm unmuted now, sorry, can everyone hear me?
Okay, Bill, yep.
Yeah, and Bill, if you could just let me put this on full screen again, just be careful when you're
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because you are controlling my whole computer, hold on, hang on just one moment.
Sorry.
Okay, you can continue, thank you.
All right, my apologies, my apologies, and thank you commissioners for seeing us today and it's a pleasure to be presenting to you all on Zoom. So as Mary was starting to say, this is a picture of the existing facade of sixty West Seventy-Sixth Street. Some things I want to point out that were being considered during the design process are as follows. Well, just first, the impetus for this entire project is that there is a tenant in the building who is in a wheelchair. And, you know, the, our client, the building owner, wants to accommodate this tenant and try and provide a way for, to provide ADA access to the front door of this building. The, the, the major impediments are that there is a step here right in front, if you can see my cursor. And then in addition, there's a step right in front of the doorway, right here. And then also just some other features that were being taken into consideration during the design process are the two piers that Mary talked about. And then also these fire escapes here to the left and to the right, which as the ladder comes down, you will land on a landing here on the right and here on the left. Underneath that landing are two areaways below. Okay. I don't think I have control of this, oh, here we go, all right, so this is our proposed rendering, a rendering of the proposed design. So in order to accommodate, first of all, is the ramp, which we've, instead of one thing that was considered was the potential for adding a wheelchair lift, which we thought was going to be expensive and, and to be honest with you, unsightly. We felt like the best approach would be to try and take advantage of the space over one of the areaways. We felt the area on the left-hand side would be most appropriate and best to get to. So you can see here that we're essentially bridging this ramp over that areaway. We're removing that platform and this landing at the base of the ramp will serve now, will now serve as the the landing point for this fire escape on the left. You can see also, once you come up the ramp to the top, that, that step that was in front of the door has now been brought forward to the, these two piers. And then this whole entire level of landing will be flat, large and level. And then rebuild the steps, or that step in the front will remain the same. Again, the two piers have to be modified. The one on the left, and let me just go to plan now. Well, here is just a three D view wireframe from the, on the left-hand side shows the existing view, there's like a cast iron just railing here on the proposed, on the right-hand side, you see here is the pier that is proposed to be cut in half. Now, we are adorning it with the same materials as before, again here. We want to add brownstone material to match the, the current facade materials. In addition, we would like to mimic the similar detailing that's in the base here onto the piers as well, just to give it a more consistent look. So here in plan view, you'll see the So here in plan view, you'll see the the two peers in question. This is the existing view. Here are the area ways. This is the, the two landings. Now, in order to make enough space for a ramp to clear this, this area and get through this area to get into the front door, that left-hand pier will have to be modified. And we measure that it would have to be modified by cutting it in half approximately. So here is the proposed design, as you can see. So that gives us a full three foot width coming all the way up the ramp and then onto a level platform and then into the building. The pier on the right-hand side, we are proposing to leave it as is. We would just be brownstoning it and again, cladding it with those details to match the detailing on the building. Here are line elevations, line drawings of the elevations. Again, something keep in, keep in mind, the fence along the front to the left and to the right will, will remain the same. It's just the railings behind it for the ramp that will, that are new.
Can I jump in? Bill, the railings I forgot to mention are not, also not original. A different railing showed up in the nineteen forties photo. But regardless, the plan is to reuse the existing railing and then add new railing. And also, while it would be great to keep the, the left-hand pier and and cut it in half, it very well may need to be rebuilt.
Yeah, just to add to that, as you saw that massive crack that cracks all the way through the entire vertical height of that pier, I, I think it's looking more and more likely that it would just be better to rebuild that pier. This drawing are just the sections where you can see the area ways clear, also the ramp in clear view as well. Here are a few assorted details that will that address the design question. We can certainly come back to any of these if anyone has any questions. The stone sample is the closest thing that we can find to that landing material. It is some sort of granite. It is extremely weathered, very dirty. So we probably have to do a few more tests and cleaning to get it to match, but I think we'll be able to find something pretty easily. The black satin paint is really just for the ironwork. And that's, that's pretty much it. I think it's pretty straightforward. I think we feel very good about this approach. We think that it's going to be able to serve the needs of this tenant and still be able to be very appropriate to the facade of this beautiful building. And we think our suggestions to the peers are even improve it that much more. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and we do have a question and we might have others. So Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Um, a couple of questions. First of all, what happens to the windows in the area way under the new sidewalk?
Under the, underneath the new sidewalk.
Right.
They would I can answer that, Bill.
Yeah, go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, so this is Bryce Carter. I'm with Sook Design as well. Those shutters are what we saw to be permanently shut right now. So the area way is just an open area.
Okay, and would it be legal, do, if you, if, if you could push the pillars forward, would you be able to do so sufficiently so that you could have a full pillar on both sides? Would that be legal to do so?
No room.
I don't believe there is enough room, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Because we're already going past the property line, just as a stoop would. I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to look into that further, though.
Is the property line at the area way line?
Yes.
Oh. I mean, you are allowed to, well.
We are allowed a protection, but I, 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 I'm happy to, I'm, I'm very happy to investigate that a little bit more closely.
Thank you.
Hey, other questions? All right. Don't see any other questions for now. So we'll move to public testimony. And if you're here and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And I will turn it over to Lisa now.
Okay, great. We had two people sign up, so I'm gonna start with Mark Diller and then move to Sean Korsandi. So, Mark, bring you in.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Diller for Chair of Community Board Seven, Manhattan. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this matter. Community Board Seven's Preservation Committee met in July, but the full board does not meet until September. Given the nature of this application, we have determined that it would be appropriate to go forward with a public hearing with only a committee resolution. So that is what I'm going to be presenting to you today. With thanks to the chairs of our Preservation Committee, which will continue to meet in August. The, the proposed resolution that was adopted by, adopted unanimously by the Preservation Committee is to approve with conditions. And the conditions relate, not surprisingly, to the pier, to those, those two peers. Our strong view is that the entrance way should be symmetrical. And there are two ways to achieve that, that we put into our resolution, neither one of which I think we would be comfortable with. One would be to reduce the pier on the west side to match the pier on the east side. So that the entrance way would be symmetrical with respect to those peers. Which would also create the possibility of extending the fence along the west side so that it encloses the landing of the fire escape and you could extend the, the landing to the west of the entrance. So that the egress from the fire escape goes through the same landing that the ADA ramp would lead to. That would create even more symmetry with respect to the appearance of the front facade. The other, and that could be true of either, either option. The other option that we also looked at was the possibility that since these, these masonry peers are not original to the building. And the appearance of the one that has to be cut in half might be a compromised view from any angle other than straight on. The I'm sorry, I thought I turned my camera on. I apologize. I was pointing with my hand and you couldn't see that. That, that, that the symmetry would be only visible straight on, but not from the angle coming in from the avenue was to investigate whether a wrought iron post that is decorative and very typical of the Upper West Side railings has, I, I assume that you know better than me what they look like, but that would be an alternative that could enhance the, the look of the building, maintain the integrity of the style and be in, be a, an alternative to the cutting in half and the obvious look of a cut in half pillar. Based on those ideas, we, the committee voted to approve and we recommend that to your consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll bring in Sean. Okay, Sean, I brought you in as a panelist.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Sean Korsandi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the applicant's efforts to make this landmark accessible and believes in the merits of this project. Our committee recognizes the current peers are heavily etched, concrete, cord hollow, and compromised with fissures. With that understanding, we question the material and form of their replacements. First, did the applicant consider replicating the rounded top granite piers that are shown in the tax photos? Second, if not returning to the original precedent of material and form, pulling profiles from the pilasters of the door and frameance is a thoughtful option. It just feels a bit stage set for anyone exiting the landmark who would see a smoothed backside facing the building. The committee hopes the applicant might consider continuing the profiles on four sides and not just three. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And that's the end of the testimony.
We, um, we did, Mary Dirix, again, we did appreciate especially our discussions with, with the Community Board Seven. We thank them for letting this project go ahead without the, the full board vote. The, it was pretty much a decision by the owner to have less, um, less intervention rather than more and just not, not cut both columns, but their peers, but just, just slice the one. We understand that the whole concept of symmetry is also an important one. And if we need to, we would be open to to doing that, to making them symmetrical. But the owner was looking to do, not do that, if, if at all possible. And I think that the, the doing molding on the back of one side probably isn't possible because Billy, please chime in, because I think there's probably not room.
Yeah, I think it might be a little tight, but I'm sorry.
Can I just interrupt for one minute?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we, we just got ahead of ourselves a little bit. And before we turn back to you, I wanted to just turn to our staff and see if there, if we received any written testimony.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
There were no other additional comments.
All right, thank you. So go ahead.
I knew it. No, just joking. No, I, 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 I appreciate the comments about wrapping the trim around the, around the backside so that we can at least make it four-sided. I, we will endeavor to try and make that happen. I do agree that I think that would, that would be a, a, a better look to do that. You know, if, if, if the commission feels strongly about making the peers equal, I would, you know, I, I'm happy to speak to ownership to try and make that happen. But as Mary said, it is, it is the owner's desire to try and minimize the amount of work that they have to do here. It was a bit of a surprise and and, and they're trying to make this accommodation and do it as quickly to in order to respond to the tenant that's, that is living in the building. So, and who is continuing to have some issues getting in and out. So but we are happy to take those suggestions to the owner.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have any other final questions, particularly on the feasibility of any proposed suggested or proposed changes that we might suggest in our discussion? Okay, all right, not seeing any questions. Let's move to close the hearing. And I'm muting, unmuting you all. So check your screen in case you need to accept that. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
Favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, again, this is about providing very free access within an area way, which they're fortunate to have, but does involve reconfiguring some of the stoop elements for pushing it out and reconfiguring this pier. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to begin on this one?
Uh, I, I actually agree in general with the community board. I'm although normally you don't want to remove more historic fabric than necessary, it's, uh, it's not, you know, it's not clear that it's originally historic to begin. I mean, it, it has history, let's put it that way. I would be more comfortable with having a
No.
But having a symmetric, symmetrical situation. And either by having reduced peers, if that looks appropriate on both sides. Or else even the suggestion they made about using a wrought iron post, which would make more of the, if that was appropriate for the style of building, that would fit, it'd reveal more of the existing facade and the the pillars that are behind this, these posts. So that's my, my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree. I gotta say, Upper West Side is lucky to have Mr. Diller for a representative. It's always very thoughtful and circumspect and interesting. And I agree wholeheartedly with him. And when, when he said what he said about the wrought iron post, I, I look back at the photographs of the existing bases under those columns. They're lovely. They're beautiful. Get rid of the, these, these crappy concrete pillars and, and expose them. I don't think you even need necessarily to have a decorative post, although that'd be lovely. I think a, a simple minimal extension and of the, of the existing area way railing, wrought iron pickets would be, would be more preferable to a non-symmetrical, non-historic set of pillars that block and obscure the view to some really remarkable stonework at a remarkable entry.
Devonshire. Commissioner Devonshire.
I agree with my two colleagues, extend the railing.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
Same here.
And?
Same, and thanks to Mark Diller.
And Commissioner Letfy.
I'm also, I'm also in agreement.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm in agreement.
Jefferson?
Me too.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think.
Hello, sorry. Yes, I'm in agreement. The railing should be extended.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And so I think that's everybody we have a consensus to approve with the
I haven't, I haven't spoken enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had missed one, but I couldn't see it on my list.
It's okay. That's all right. I'm, I'm in agreement, so. Take it easy.
All right, great. So I think we're all in agreement to approve this with the recommendation that in lieu of, of keeping the and modifying the one non-historic post, the railing be extended. Or that the symmetry be addressed in another suitable manner, working in consultation with the staff. So Commissioner Chapin, are you, would you be comfortable making that motion?
Yeah, I'll make your staff. Thank you. In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough Manhattan, LPC twenty one oh five seventy five sixty west seventy sixth street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance Revival style flats building designed by Henry Anderson, built in eighteen ninety two to ninety four, application is to modify the entrance landing and area way and install a ramp. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. I recommend a global modification, finding that the proposed work will provide barrier-free access at the main building entrance without eliminating any significant architectural features. That raising a portion of the area way well to grade and raising the entrance landing by installing one additional step will be discreet changes that are harmonious with the design of the building base. That the ramp and railings will be simply designed, typical in terms of materials and finishes, and partially screened from view by the fence, thereby helping them to the main and secondary presence. That the new granite clad landing will match the historic landing in terms of material details and finish. That removing the freestanding masonry plints, which are modern, will help the enter, will relate better to the entrance and will be in keeping with the design of entranceway, entranceways found at buildings of this type, style and age. And that the applicant will work with the staff to find a suitable metal post to be placed in place of the current masonry plints. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building. street scape, or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
Okay, and Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Eric Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner
Aye.
Commissioner Lutpe?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. And please
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item. It's the last item. It is item number seven, docket number 20-05611, 26 East 78th Street in the Metropolitan Museum Historic District in Manhattan, Lot 1392, Lot 159. Application for certificate of appropriateness. An Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Silas M. Stiles and built in 1871. The application is to demolish an existing rear addition and construct rear yard and rooftop additions.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing and now have control of the slides. Please state your names for the record and you may begin.
This is Eugene Sun of Lang Architecture. And my colleague who's joining us is Leonardo Tamargo. And we are presenting 2060 78th Street. And thank you for your time this afternoon, commissioners. Next sheet, please. Our building, 2060 78th Street, is located between Madison Avenue and Fifth Avenue, at 78th Street, East 78th Street, and is closer to the corner of Madison Avenue. Our proposal is going to have a roof addition, which is five feet above the tallest point of the existing roof, and a rear addition, as mentioned before. As you can see on lot 1008 at the corner, their property is actually five stories stated here, but rises a story above ours and blocks the view of our property from Madison Avenue. And for the rear yard, we are actually surrounded by three other buildings which are approximately same roofline height as ours and have walls that are five stories, even though they're not marked as such. The first being 1002, which is on the east side. And that actually is approximately three feet below our roofline. And then to the south, 1000, which is at our roofline. And then 24 East 78th Street, which is adjacent to us on the west. And they follow our roofline all the way to the rear. And they have a bulkhead, we're assuming is a stair. Also to note is the Mark Hotel, which is 15 stories on 77th Street. Just to give you a scale of what's occurring at the block. And then mid-block, 14 East 78th Street, is actually seven stories and runs into the rear yard a little bit with their seven-story addition. Next slide. This is a bird's eye view at an angle. And you can see the Mark Hotel on 77th Street, which is the larger building to our south. And then at the corner again, it is 1008 on Madison Avenue. And to the west of us is 24 East 78th Street, which is our same roof height. Next slide. Here you see the 1940 tax photo of our facade and the alleyway. The alleyway is actually 1008 Madison's and off of our property. But you see our facade, our side facade exposed. This is the existing condition of the building in the middle and needs some renovation, has not been renovated in a while. As you can see from the lower right photo. And then the upper right photo is the rear facade, which shows anachronistic windows. And in front with the guardrail is a concrete one-story addition. That is not of the time period. The brick above that is where the original building facade was. Next slide, please. Here on the roof, just to give you some perspective of what's adjacent to us, the top is on the roof looking south toward the Mark Hotel, all the way in the back. To the right a little bit, you will see the stair bulkhead, what we assume is stair bulkhead. And that is 24 East 78th Street. And then to the right, you see the alleyway and the adjacent buildings. And you can see large condenser units and other mechanical dunage on all the adjacent properties that are above our roofline. Below that, you see from our roof looking north. And this is, you can see the dunage and mechanical unit to our left, which is to the west. And then to the right is, and to the east is 1008 Madison, which shows the full story above our roofline. And actually, they have a bulkhead on top of that, which is two stories above our property. Next slide. So this is the view from the bottom of the rear yard. As you can see, they are all five stories. Essentially, the only building that's a little lower, it's like two to three feet lower than our roofline, is 1002. That is to the east. And where the windows are, that's our existing facade. And then to the right, you see the alleyway between 1008 and our property, which is only four foot 10 wide, but is visible from the street. Next slide. This is the top of the rear yard. And you can see from the left would be looking east and then south and then west. Again, the same at the base. These are the at-grade in the rear yard. Next slide. And this is the alleyway to the right between 1008 and our property. Then we have property that is 1006, which is one story in their rear yard. And then the three-story addition with a bulkhead on 1002. Next slide. And this is the existing condition, which are the two views that we're going to be reviewing with you. The front facade with our cornice. And if you observe to the east is 1008 with the alleyway. And to the west, we have a mansard roof that does not have a cornice. Then the next building adjacent to that does have a cornice. Next slide. This is our addition that we're proposing with five sawtooth skylights and then skylight over the elevator. And it is five feet above the cornice, which is the highest point of our roof. And with the line of sight straight on, we are six to eight inches below that view. And so our addition is not viewable from the street, from the face of the building. But adjacent to us, if you're looking down the alley or from the west, you will glimpse the addition, which we're hoping to mitigate its impact by cladding in brick to match the alley facade and also to clad the front face with stucco that is matching the brick color, where there isn't a window that is going to be a black wood window. Next slide. Next slide, please. This is the mock-up. And as you can see, we feel that there is a certain consistency having the first monitor close to the cornice and stepping back as it goes, so that there's a certain consistency and it doesn't look as obvious addition when viewed from the side. And also note that this width of this alley is only four foot 10. So there's only a limited time that this view is accessible. And then to the west, there will be a little bit of view of our addition also on the roof because of the mansard roof that's adjacent to us. But it is, if there was a cornice, it would be hidden by it. And as you can see, if you drew a line from our corners to the adjacent buildings. Next slide, please. This is just the existing elevation from the alley where we're infilling the existing windows. Next slide. And this is the addition, which is five feet above the cornice that we have and 60 feet from curb. And to the rear, all the way to the rear, our mechanical units will pop up about three feet above that height. But that's the only element that will pop above that. Next slide. This is the other side. Next slide. And this is elevations of the existing rear yard and their heights. And as noted before, the one-story addition is concrete that will be demolished. And everything will be infilled to provide a freight elevator. Next slide. And this is a section showing everything and what will be demolished, the rear facade and the addition. And then we will be infilling with the freight elevator. Next slide. This is a section of our design. So it has a central core stair and then gallery spaces on either side. You can note that we are trying to create a uniform north light with the sawtooth skylights. And then at the rear, we have a freight elevator, which will bring the artwork and patrons to each floor with the skylight to allow some light bouncing around there in the rear. Next slide. This is the roof with, as you can note, a lot of different bulkheads surrounding us at different heights. Next slide. And this is a section. Next slide. Oh, go back one. And this shows the line of sight from front of our, off of 78th Street. And the height of the first monitor is about six inches below that angle. So that's what we're trying to accommodate. Next slide. And these are accident metric views at the top row are without the addition, but the existing condition. And the bottom row is with our addition and the heights of the adjacent properties rotating around our site. Next slide. So this reiterates that we are planning on cladding the side of the sawtooth skylights with brick. And then the front elevation will be a stucco that matches the brick color. And the windows again will be a black wood window that will match the historic windows that we're to providing for the front facade. Next slide. And these are existing plans of the residential building as it exists now. Next slide. And that's the roof. And these are the proposed plans for our gallery with the elevator to the rear. And that's the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? There any questions, raise your hand and I'll call on you. I see one question. Commissioner Goldblum?
Did I miss it? Or were there visibility studies of the new skylights from?
They are the, we have photos of the mock-up that shows the visibility from 78th Street.
So do you?
And
Yeah, maybe if you could just point to it with their cursor, something so that
So from the alley from Madison Avenue, you can see the orange fencing of the monitors as they march back. And it's at the very top of the building and it's only five feet above the cornice. And so it's a very slim view of it. The alley again is only four foot 10 wide. And then on the west side, you'll be able to see it just over the adjacent mansard roof, the corner that's orange right there.
And then as you move further over the cornice on the two buildings over, I would imagine within block its view.
Correct.
Commissioner Jefferson?
This is a question. Is there any reason why the skylight, the sawtooth skylight, could not be set in within the perimeter of the building, a foot or two? And you get the same amount of light without having this view that you could see the additional pieces?
We're hoping to utilize the existing bearing walls to build up. And if we, and the fact is our property is only 15 foot five wide total. And interior surfaces, it's neck down to about 13, three. And so we're hoping to get it to feel as large as possible because we're working with such small dimensions. So the intent was just to make the structure more efficient and also to make it as consistent on the interior as possible without stepping it in. And to try to get the galleries to have two monitors for each gallery as you're in the space that has north light.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I don't think we have any other questions at this moment. So we will take testimony now. And if you are in the audience or in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa. Thank you.
Okay, we had one person that signed up in advance. That's Laura, I can't. And Laura, you should be ready.
Yes, just give me one second. Laura Sakin, representing Friends of the Upper Side Historic Districts. Friends Preservation Committee does not oppose the proposed rooftop addition. Its minimal visibility will not detract from the streetscape or negatively impact the historic district. Customarily, Friends opposes large-scale additions that significantly diminish the rear yard and reduce the size of the donut. However, the existing yard is completely enclosed and does not contribute to this block's donut. Therefore, we reluctantly support the proposed rear yard addition. Finally, Friends appreciate the in-kind restoration of the main facade. However, we would have liked to see a more comprehensive drawing showing the accessibility lift to be installed. We understand that this part of the proposal is being reviewed and approved at staff level. Nonetheless, Friends believes the public would have benefited from seeing the full scope of the alterations proposed at the entryway. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
And that's going to be it.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do. We have a resolution from Community Board recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I know, I think we have a question from our commissioners, but I'd like to turn to Mr. Sun now to see if you want to respond to the comments in the testimony before we move to our final questions.
Sure, thank you, Laura. The only comment is that we definitely will be very conscientious about the design and development of the wheelchair lot. But we're also wanting to make sure that the property is accessible. And we're definitely trying to make it the least impactful. And that's, we're planning on doing an angled lift that will follow the slope of the stair and hopefully fold up as best we can to be as minimally, again, impactful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, final questions? Commissioner Goldblum, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up before. But maybe it's
Took it down.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, then I think we can move to our discussion. So I'm going to start unmuting everybody. And I'm going to ask Lutpe, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that?
I second.
I second it.
Favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I understand the questions around about the skylights, their visibility, but I actually think that this is a, a very thoughtful and careful proposal and I can support it as presented.
Anne?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Cut out a little bit. I agree that it's a very thoughtfully put together proposal. I'm a little troubled by being able to see that, the first skylight, so I guess depending on how other commissioners feel, perhaps it could be lowered a foot or perhaps pushed back a foot just to help reduce that visibility. Otherwise, I think it's very appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
I can approve the proposal in general, but I think that because the skylights, well, they're in odd shape, obviously, but to make it I, I'm feeling uncomfortable with the masonry side on the side, skylight, because I think it's making it too much to appear where it is visible as part of the building and that metal or some other material that would make it clear that it was an addition and, and a skylight would be more appropriate than, than the material that if I, I believe that they proposed. I just lost connection, I'm on the phone now. I believe the material on the side was masonry and I, I think it should be, or brick. Or I think it should be something more that would be compatible in addition and, you know, look like an addition to the building.
And is that your feeling for just the front skylight, which is the one that is the most visible? Or for the entire system of skylights?
I guess it, yeah, it doesn't matter so much if it's not visible, obviously, but that's, that's my reaction. I, I thought they just want to make it all the same, but it, it doesn't. Yes, the visible ones are what I'm concerned about.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I, I'm actually okay with it as is, but I, I think that in addressing Anne's concern, one thing that, that they might consider doing that wouldn't diminish the amount of light would be to just kind of tilt them back. Instead of having a sawtooth with a vertical face, a lot of the sawtooths that you see and a lot of the north lights that you see in the city have an angled front. And if we were angled back a little bit, it would certainly reduce the visibility of that front skylight. And you wouldn't have to reduce the amount of glass at all. I personally like the brick on the side. I think it keeps it quiet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire? Commissioner Devonshire, are you there?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm okay with it as presented.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen?
I'm sort of in agreement with Anne and the Commissioner Goldblum that the first skylight, by the way, the skylight is designed to bring the northern light in is, is very nicely done. I, I think that's excellent. But I think, given the concern, some of the comments, I would see how the majority of the commissioners feel. Whether it's tilting it back or whether it's slightly angling it. I, I leave it up to the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bland?
Okay, as is, I don't have any problem with seeing it the way it's been designed or with the brick side.
Lutfi?
I think it's a nice project. I do think that the skylight that's visible should be modified in some way to eliminate that visibility and I'm okay with the brick side.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I am opposed to the facade, I'm opposed to seeing the sawtooth skylight. I think the volume of a brownstone should be kept the way it is and the skylight could be moved in. But to see a scallop thing through that slot, I find it difficult.
Carol, we cannot hear you.
We, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Now we can.
All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you. I get, I get the last word today. I, I agree with the commissioners who think that the first skylight needs to be adjusted, removed, whatever it is to make it less visible or invisible, I would say. That's it, otherwise it's fine.
Okay, great. All right, so I think while we have a couple who are okay with it as is, a few who are okay with it as is, and one who wouldn't like to see any visibility at the front skylight. I think the majority of commissioners would approve it with the condition that the front skylight be reduced invisibility slightly, working in consultation with the staff. And that could be lowering it or tilting it or setting it in. So let me see, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
Sure. In the matter of LPC twenty dash zero five six one one, twenty-six East Seventy-Eighth Street in the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. An Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Silas M. Stiles and built in eighteen seventy-one. The application is to demolish an existing year, existing rear yard addition and construct rear yard and rooftop additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. Recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed rooftop addition featuring a series of stucco-clad sawtooth skylights will not be visible directly over the front facade, will only be visible over secondary facades from limited view corridors. That the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That this building is closely hemmed in by large buildings and additions and is not part of an intact row. Therefore, the proposed construction of a full-height, full-lot addition that wraps onto the roof will not eliminate a rear yard or detract from an intact central green space or unified row. The cumulative effect of the added volume of a rooftop and rear yard addition will not overwhelm the building or the surrounding buildings. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. However, I find that the first skylight near the front facade is too visible over the neighboring building to the west, where it detracts from the view of that building's historic dormer windows and this building's historic cornice. Therefore, I recommend that the first skylight near the front facade be lowered, set back or angled in order to reduce its visibility.
Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Rich, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Sorry, I did not understand that.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
That modification, so please work with the staff on that. And I'd like to thank everyone for today. That's the conclusion of our agenda and thank every, like to thank everybody for your participation and your dedication today and we will see you all next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.